Call to order, uh, is there any agenda additions or deletions?
I have a couple of items I would like to brief report on very brief. We can either do it under new business or wait till we get the officer reports or something. Your choice.
Anything specific, George, or?
Uh, a couple of items on the transfer station, just report.
So I'll make a motion that we add it, uh, George's items under for transfer station under old business.
Sounds good.
Okay. I'll second that. Hold on, favor in motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, is there any other additions or deletions? Uh, approval of the minutes of October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
So I'm moved.
I'll second that.
Hold on, favor in motion?
Aye.
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 All right, and we signed these, George, right?
Yep.
Put that over there in case you want to look at it. All right, we don't have a road commissioner tonight, uh, do you have anything you want to report?
Hmm, he had me order a couple of signs today, a couple of yield signs, but I don't recall him saying where they were going. But he has been busy putting up the other signs that we ordered from the last meeting.
Okay, that sounds good. Up on West Timmer Road?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, good. Uh, anybody have any other updates regarding the road?
I'm aware of.
Okay. Uh, let's see, approval of select board warrants. Here, right here. Uh, just go to guests, Evan Fitzgerald.
I'm working on that right now, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, work a little faster.
I'm doing my best. I should have been, should have been a little quicker.
Football season.
Here it comes.
Monday night football.
Technology's great networks. Here we go.
You getting him on the computers?
Yeah, he's gonna be on the computer here.
While you're doing that, we could, uh, any public comments? Yes?
Can we readdress the quarter line road and getting potholes fixed down on the other end?
Oh.
Our, our section or?
Neighbors, neighboring town section.
Have you guys reached out to them?
Yep. Trying to kind of grade them.
That was, that was the feedback?
Yep. So, and after that rain last week, the potholes got, can't get around them anymore.
No, you go slow.
Yeah.
Cross your fingers.
Don't go slow.
Potholes and a little bit of road?
Yep.
Um, Kim, is there any chance, make a little note and give them a call tomorrow and see if we can inspire them to be a little bit more up to date with their road care?
Hey Evan, how are you?
Good, how about you?
Good. We're.
You hear me okay?
I can hear you good, we're gonna get you turned up here on my end, so that, try that, see how that sounds.
Hey Rob, who's that good looking guy next?
I, I can hear you loud and clear.
There we go, now we can hear you loud and clear now, okay. All right.
All right, go ahead, Rob.
So Evan, we're actually, uh, we got to you already, so you're good to jump right in.
Very good, okay. Um, I'm wondering, so I'm not, there's no screen that everybody can see except for what, uh, you got a laptop in front of you, I assume?
Yeah, we do have printouts of your report though.
Okay.
Yep.
That's what I was wondering, so you've got the report, you've got, um, there were several maps in the back and, um, graphs and things. I think, um, probably the things that I'm gonna be referencing the most is, um, there's a table on page three of the report that says table two, Cold River Management Plan Summary, and it lists, uh, different sediment problem areas.
Yep.
Uh, number railroad bridge, et cetera, yep. So I'll be referencing that as well as a map that was at the end of the report that has different colors for, for these different areas, one being around the railroad bridge, another being around middle road, and then a third being upstream.
Okay, yep.
Yep, so if you guys are refer, you know, got those printouts, you could be looking probably at those two the most. So let me just back up, um, before I get to that, I can just explain, um, how we got here, um, and then if, if you have any questions as I go, feel free to, to stop me, so, um, you know, the objective of this work that you hired us for was to, um, understand, you know, and create a plan that the DEC could review and accept, that the town would accept as well, for maintaining sediment in the, in the river around the middle road bridge, such that flood risks are reduced, um, both for public infrastructure, for the town's infrastructure, as well as neighboring homes, particularly those to the south where during big floods like in Irene, floodwaters spill over and carry sediment debris, um, you know, to the south. So, um, to accomplish that, we're following up on work that, um, as you know, that our firm had done after Irene and then, um, around, uh, twenty fifteen. So we went out, um, about a year ago now, actually, la- last fall, did some follow-up measurements, uh, in the stream, and we had several years of, um, measurements in the channel to reference, so we could gain an understanding of how the riverbed has changed, um, since, you know, the post-Irene era, including even, um, after some of the, the bigger floods like the July, uh, twenty twenty-three flood that, you know, impacted your area. Um, so, just as a quick synopsis of that, what, what we were seeing from that work was, as expected, um, the bed of the river has what we call aggravated or accumulated sediment, especially around the bridges, and we expect this because the bridges, you know, water has to contract through those bridges, it slows down some, and some of the bigger sediment, as you know, the Cold River carries, um, carries a, a big sediment load with cobbles, you know, um, even like basketball size or bigger, uh, material. And that basically, as, as the velocity of the water slows around those constrictions, that material drops out, you know, the river can't carry it anymore, so we'd expect to see the bed building up in those areas over time. So that, that was borne out in our measurements. And then what we used those measurements to do was, um, create or actually update a hydraulics model that we had developed years ago, but we kind of modernized it with the best, you know, software that we use today and with these new measurements. And we evaluated different level, levels of additional degradation of sediment in the channel, and what sort of risks those different levels of sediment would create. And so when you look at that table, table two, that has, um, in the far left-hand column, it has, you know, the different problem areas, railroad bridge, middle road bridge, and then upstream. And then across the top of those, uh, columns, you've got, um, different levels, different depths of, it says degradation, that's basically how much is the bed filling in, two feet, three feet, four feet. And when we're talking about basketball size or bigger cobbles, one foot doesn't really matter, right? One foot, one storm could bring in a foot of sediment, so really, you know, the reason we pick these, these different increments, two, three, two feet, three feet, four feet, was to really, you know, evaluate realistic levels of, of filling in of the channel. So what you see it kind of in those summaries across in those different, uh, boxes is, it's, it's saying what we would expect, probably the railroad bridge is the most obvious. That railroad bridge is vastly undersized from a hydraulic standpoint. Um, it's already, you know, with, with even a couple feet of sediment, not even the ten-year flood is, is actually passing through that opening before it hits the low steel of the bridge. Um, and then with, with additional feet of sediment, three feet, four feet, you know, it's saying, um, oh, and by the way, where it says Q ten, Q five, et cetera, those, those correspond to flood levels. Q, Q is short for flow, and five would be the five-year flood, Q twenty-five would be the twenty-five-year flood, et cetera.
That railroad bridge, I have a question, the railroad bridge, um, that's so old now. I wonder if we could get the state to have them upgrade that?
Good luck.
Yeah, right.
Highly, highly unlikely.
About railroads, when you think about it, you know, you can raise the grade of a municipal road.
Yeah.
Like you did with, with middle road when that bridge went in, um, you could do that relatively easy by, you know, it creates a hump and a rise of, you know, for the, uh, for car, that cars can navigate. But if you try to change the profile, you know, the slope of those approaches on a rail leading to it, you know, you're talking about filling, changing that embankment back, you know, many.
I didn't mean raise it, I meant, uh, make the opening wider.
Oh, wider, yep.
Yeah.
That, that could work.
Because.
I think it'd have to be a combination of widening and, and probably getting more height, which, um, yeah, there's a few ways you can skin that cap.
When we cleaned that out a long time ago, back in the nineties, uh, late nineties, um, we didn't realize how deep that was underneath there, because then there's a concrete pad underneath, and so the dirt and stone fills in there, probably three or four foot high. And that's what narrows that down.
Yeah. Um, so I'll just say a couple more things and then you can pepper me with, with questions. You know, we, we looked at, at the railroad bridge, it's a question of just not enough hydraulic opening, and, you know, even small levels of filling, even two feet, represent a risk. And of course, of course, as you, as that area fills, it creates, it has an effect on its neighboring area upstream, right? So as that area fills, obviously it's slowing the velocity of water that approaches that bridge in relation to what's happening at the middle road bridge, which then in turn affects the whole system upstream. So, the problem does, you know, in some ways begin around the railroad bridge, um, and propagate upstream is sort of one, one finding, I think, and, and that kind of makes sense probably to most people. Um, the other thing we looked at around the railroad, or I'm sorry, around the middle road bridge, which has very sufficient hydraulic opening, that, you know, that has a tall, that's like a twelve-foot tall opening. Um, so it's that, there, it's not a question of how much floodwater can actually squeeze through the bridge before it's, you know, compromising the structure. And, and you guys can tell me whether you've ever seen floodwaters hitting the, the low steel of that bridge, um, in a flood. My guess is probably not, based on our, our calculations. But what, what is problematic there, what you have had to address, what the town has had expense addressing, is the venturi effect, right? The flows speeding up as it moves through that opening, squeezes through. And so, if you can imagine, even though it has sufficient height, as that bed fills and the overall rectangular opening is getting smaller, the velocity increases substantially, and you get erosion, right, uh, in those approaches where the river's approaching. And I know you had that in the last flood, you had to do a bunch of armoring along the banks there, um, where the ri, where the river has to squeeze through. Um, so that, we, you know, all of these things, we wanted to quantify in a defensible way, you'll see some things in this table that say, you know, with three feet of sediment at the middle road bridge, we see a seventy to ninety degrees in the velocity, and these, and these smaller floods, that's substantial. But, you know, that's a risk that can be mitigated. Um, then, ju, uh, I'll just say one last thing for the upstream area, um, you know, it, it takes a bigger flood, as, as you know, and as, um, I don't know if Dan is in the room at all, but as Dan knows, you know, to, um, create, the, you know, to, to have the risk of the, the flow overtopping that south bank and getting into that, that chute that goes through the dry bridge. You know, it takes the biggest floods, really, um, to have that risk, and so, um, that's why, you know, we weren't seeing, until you have three or even four feet of sediment filling in the channel up there, would you get to a higher risk, um, level with overflowing toward the south? And that, I think that kind of checks out in reality, right? Like we, it was close in the past, in this last flood in twenty-three, but it wa, you know, it was really the Irene flood that, that, um, went over the bank, and it did a lot there, um. But yeah, I'll stop talking now for a minute, that's kind of a story, um, you know, if you, if you look at the map, basically, in relation to this table, it says the danger, the danger points or the trigger points that we're recommending for maintenance are two feet of filling down the railroad bridge and three feet of filling upstream.
Is it safe to say, Evan, that we're pretty much there at this point?
No, you, so this is in relation to, uh, well, it's in relation to what we measured a year ago. So, there, there could be a foot of sediment, I mean, this section of the Cold River is what we refer to as an alluvial fan. It is a depositional zone, and I, I think I've explained that to you all before, you know?
Yep.
You know that the river comes out of a narrowly confined valley upstream of Route seven. It pinches under Route seven, it, it's got a lot of energy, it's carrying a big sediment load, and then it hits this area just upstream of middle road, and the valley opens up, the river loses energy, and it's, it's going to fill in that area over time, so, um, it's just what we'd expect, you know? So we're, we're not quite there yet, but another flood and you may be there, I think is the point.
So is the next logical step then, um, it goes to, would it be DEC or A and R that has to approve everything so that when we hit the trigger points, they have, they say yes, this plan's in play, and I assume they probably have to grant access to the river?
That's right, yep, so I wanted you all as a town to review this, ask me any questions about these recommendations, and then once we're okay with it, I would share this with Josh Carvahal, the DEC River Engineer. And I, I'd expect we'd have some kind of meeting onsite to discuss this some more, um, or, or it could be a Zoom meeting or something, but I think it'd probably be more productive, uh, in person, and, um, he, you know, give him the opportunity to ask us any questions about our analysis, and then once we memorialize this plan, and, and we have, you know, monumented references in the, on the banks, um, that basically would need to get referenced in the future, so that DEC would say, okay, you've hit these trigger points, and yes, we've agreed to this plan, and we, at least that's how I'd imagine this going.
Okay.
And, uh, and that way, it, this is an efficient process for everyone, you're not, neither DEC nor the town is quibbling in the moment after a flood about, you know, this or that. The measurements can be taken, and then, you know, the work can move forward.
And I assume once it's memorialized, that probably that authority can come from Josh's office. I don't think it would take an act of Congress once it's through, would be my prediction, right? Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Sorry, I asked all the questions, anybody else got any questions?
Well, I had one that's probably ridiculous, but I'll try, try it anyways. Um, oh, i- if we keep mo, a monitoring system over time, and I'm not sure what the length of time would have to be, would that, uh, help in terms of predicting, uh, what would, uh, happen? In terms of some kind of a average ability of coming up with, you know, so many inches per something?
Oh, sure, like a, uh, a rate of filling?
Yes.
Yes, I think, um, you know, unless you've had some bigger floods and you want to actually go out there and measure it after, you know, let's just assume, well, who knows what normal is anymore, right? But let's just assume we have, we have a, we have a series of normal years, let's just say, you know, two or three years. I think it would be helpful to do some follow-up measurement to compare to that baseline condition that we measured a year ago now, you know, in, in the fall of twenty-four. To answer the question that you just posed, which is how quickly, you know, over a period of normal years, is this channel filling? Um, you know, all of that is good housekeeping, if you will, and documentation for A and R. I think the more you're, you know, documenting these changes and really proving to A and R that, hey, you know, we mean business, we're on top of this, and we, we want to be ready to mitigate the risk the next time when it gets critical. You know, I think, um, that would go a long way for, for getting a swift approval.
What do we use as, as measuring points, are there pins or something that we have to, okay?
There are, we, we, uh, install rebar pins at these, those cross-sections that are shown.
Okay.
On, um, yeah, but different, well, I don't know if it's on every plan. Yep, it's on the plan with the colors, so those different numbers, you know, two-point-eight-three, et cetera.
Those are the pin locations, okay, yep.
Yeah, and, you know, we can talk at some point about what, I mean, conceivably, somebody could go out there with a laser level and like.
That's what I was thinking.
And we could talk about different ways to make this economical for the town. I know, like, you don't want to be doing this, you don't want to be hiring us, say, every year to do this. Um, but at the same time, to be able to make these comparison measurements, you know, it'd be, if we had the data, we could just drop it into our graphs pretty easily and, and do the math for you, um. You know, another simplistic monitoring approach could be simply taping down from the low steel of the middle road bridge and the low steel of the railroad bridge, you know, each, each year, um. If, if, uh, for example, you didn't want to hire somebody to measure all of them, or we could measure a subset of them for you periodically, you know, there, anyways, we could talk about, um, the best and most economical approach, you know, approach for the town to, to keep an eye on this, yep.
I'm set.
I'm good. You good, Don?
Yep.
You good?
All right, the only thing that I would question is there a time before winter? Or should we wait till spring to meet with you guys again up there, just to go over stuff? Because it sounds like you already measured stuff, and so I'd like to find out six months from now what those measurements look like.
Sure. Um.
Well, it sounds like the next step is it's got to go to Josh anyway, once the town's satisfied.
Yeah, why don't I, what, yeah, once you, once the town is okay, assuming you're okay with this, or if you have any, any comments or adjustments, you know, um, you'd like us to make or consider making, um, we can get through that, and then once this is, you know, finalized on the town side, I can submit it to Josh and keep, you know, by email, keep you all in the loop or copy you on the email, and, uh, ask him, you know, are you, what do you, what do you would like to do? If you'd like to meet this fall, or, um, I'm, I'm certainly available to meet before winter, um, or, yeah.
So what I would suggest, just because this is such a big deal, we've heard the presentation tonight, I think we should all take one more look at it over the next section. Cash theoretically will be back at that meeting.
Yep.
And we could formally recommend it to Evan to go to Josh next meeting, so in two, in two weeks, yeah.
I don't know if we should see if anybody here has a question.
Yeah, we can certainly, and, but that would be my recommendation, let's collect, collect any more and go from there.
Anybody in the room have anything? Everybody's almost passed out.
All right, sorry, this stuff is exciting for me, but not for others.
Yes.
Does he have an understanding of how long, length of time of keeping track of measurements?
Yeah.
To the point where we may have to do something?
That's what we're talking about establishing, because we, we're gonna need to collect data, even if it's us measuring at the bridges for the next couple of years, to make sure we get a handle on where we are, and, um, with how dry it was this summer, I would have a prediction that probably not a whole lot happened this summer. Um, but if we get good snowfall this winter, we may have a big deposit next spring, so.
Maybe a good time to take it.
Yeah.
Just to comment. Oh, I know, I was wondering if we could relay to our guest speaker that it's a discussion where we all kind of have to go with the flow.
Well said.
Hi, George.
He, he almost fainted him, George.
Well, Evan, thank you very much for joining us, and, uh, sounds like a, after next meeting, we'll be in touch.
Great, and I, I just want to say I appreciate the town's patience, we had a lot of other FEMA-related things come up this past spring, so apologize for getting this over to you later than we expected, but, uh, yeah, let me know if you have any thoughts, and, um, we'll do the next step that, after that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, you have a good evening.
Have a good evening. You too.
Yep, bye.
Bye-bye.
Yeah, it's not a very simple, uh, process to keep track of it, from what I can gather.
Well, I guess, I guess where I, the last comment before we go on, and I didn't need to say it with him on there, is just the fact that I thought we were gonna try to establish some historics from where we are now, because we can all pretty safely assume it's collected four feet of aggregate in the last five, since it was touched.
Yeah.
So, I was hopeful that we were gonna come with a plan that said, okay, we need to pull five, six feet to get back to where we were, and then we can work forward, and it doesn't sound like that's where we are.
No.
But that's, that's another discussion.
Well, we'll get, we'll get in the situation of where we can keep track of it and then, and recommend some action, I think.
Sure.
That's what we gotta do.
Yeah, that's all we can do. I appreciate the work they've done, I mean, and, and it is here, if anybody wants to check it out, it's, it's, it's gonna be available, so.
Very detailed, but it's.
Excuse me.
Okay, where are we?
Uh, new business.
Um, Mr. McKenna.
Yeah.
Is he here?
Yes, he is, that's where we are.
My God, what a good thing that is.
Um, the planning commission has put together a survey that we want to send out to the folks in town. We did, the last one we did, I think, was two thousand fourteen, um, and we want to send out another one. We sent out emails to other, uh, elected and appointed officials in town to find out if there's anything in particular they wanted us to ask on the survey, and we did adjust things, added a couple of things based on feedback that we got. We're asking more or less the same questions that we've asked in the past, but it will help us sort of figure out where we go, where we want to go with, uh, zoning updates, which we had started to work on, but then kind of backed off to. which we had started to work on, but then kinda backed off to do the town plan, so that we could make sure we had an active town plan for anyone looking to get grants.
And I should've clarified what we're doing first. So the first thing is the grant. So is, do you want, eh, is there anything you wanna relay to us? I mean, that's just to apply to get the funding to do it, right?
Eh, as far as I know, all I, all I know about the grant is I was asked to come down and sign something.
Okay. So you're looking really for two things, approval for the grant and approval to basically conduct the survey, which you need mailing. You need the mailing money for.
Right, I need money for, for copying and then mailing.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that kills two birds with one stone. I'll make a motion that we approve the signatures on the grant, which John is one of them. Eh, and also to approve the eh, mailing per eh, spending for the eh, survey.
All right, but, all right, but you might wanna add to that, goes John has to sign that, and the full board has to sign that.
Okay, yeah, no, that's fine. I'm good with that. Are you good with that, George?
Sure.
Yeah. Just for context, Heidi gave me the figures on the town report that got sent out. So reproduction and mailing combined was somewhere around fifteen hundred dollars. And imagining it's probably gonna be about the same, cuz it's
Sure.
Two physical pages, four printed pages, folded and mailed out. So, and I think the town eh, report was probably bigger than that, more pages? I don't know. I don't remember it.
Two pa- three, four pages?
Four, I think it was four.
So it might even be less than that, and on the reproduction side, which was the more expensive.
All right, John, eh, I'll ask for the motion to approve this, and then we'll sign it and give it to you to sign too.
Yep.
Sounds good.
Sounds good to me.
Some motions on the table.
Yeah.
Can I ask a couple of questions? How many surveys are you sending out?
Total of about fourteen hundred and something or other. It's the Clarendon addresses and the people who live in Clarendon but get mail through West Rutland, like me.
Well, my mail comes through Rutland, but yeah. Eh, my other question is eh, that number, how many do you expect to get back?
Typically, a survey gets like two to three percent response. The last time we did a survey, we got almost ten, which is phenomenal when you're talking about surveys. There is also an online option that you can go to. It's a, just a Google survey, and it's exactly the same questions, but you can scroll down through and answer right online. And I think, I don't have the numbers, but we got a lot of responses from both, physical mail or dropped-off ones, as well as the Google survey.
What kind of words are you using to encourage returns? I mean, what are you, was that part of your thinking?
Eh, you know, it's basically the same text as the last time. We're giving them till the end of the calendar year to get them back to us. Eh, so, you know, and there's, I'm gonna have it in a couple of different places, you know, please drop off or mail in, or go online.
We do have a Dropbox, you know, two people can, you guys can feel free to, eh, we'll collect them out of there for you if you would like to utilize that.
Sure.
All right, just, motion made, if, that's all you had, John?
Yep. Did that answer all of your questions?
No, I have one more. I wanna know how you tally all this stuff.
Eh, Google Sheets. I take basically.
Who's the person that gets to do the data entry? Okay.
So what, what we did the last time was the, so when somebody answers the Google form, it drops into a Google Sheet. And then I ended up taking the paper responses and putting them in manually, which was a lot of fun, let me tell you. Eh, but it gave us everything all in one place.
Place, yeah, okay.
All right, there's been a motion made, seconded, we've had brief discussion. Is there any more, more discussion? We're not hearing any. Eh, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, let me just.
While you're making signatures, I would also make a motion that paired with that is our Act one fifty-four Good Standing Certificate, and I would make a motion that the chairman be eh, to sign that on the.
Part of the board.
Second.
All right, there's a motion made, seconded, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So be it.
Mr. Rabtoy here?
Mr. Rabtoy is here.
Oh, good. I'm, I'm not sure if we're quite ready for Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I think we are.
Yeah, no, we will.
Go ahead.
On the schedule, I'm here to eh, I was here to become a member of the REC committee. Since then, I've changed my direction, and I'm still gonna remain a volunteer with the REC committee, but I wanted to talk to the board about the, our Clark Smith land, which is on East Street, and using that for the purpose that eh, that Mr. Smith donated that land to the Town of Clarendon in nineteen ninety-two. Eh, and his wishes, it was wood, wildlife, water, and recreation. And I've been in there a few times on my mountain bike and hiking, and there's some really decent trails in there, although overgrown and probably needs some maintenance. And that's what I'm seeking from the board, is to volunteer my time to go into the our Clark Smith land, to clean up the trails that are there, and potentially add additional trails. Eh, because from there, you can access Spring Lake Ranch, you can access the Long Trail Appalachian Trail. Eh, and it's a decent, a decent hike. The land's not posted, so there are some hunters back there, there's some game cams in throughout the area, eh, which isn't necessarily a concern for me, but I just wanted to get the understanding from the board on what the intent is for the Town of Clarendon for that property when it comes to Mr. Smith's wishes for that use.
The guy that used to really eh, keep the board advised that anything going on was Jeff Taylor, who lived, you know, across there. Eh, one of the Spencers, I can't remember, was, I think was the oldest son. He would go up there periodically and let us know that it needed some work.
Is he the one that runs the farm currently?
No, I, he's the one I think eh, passed away.
Mark passed away.
Yeah, that's what we just.
That's, he had the house. Yeah.
But what I would say is we have been under the direction for the land eh, the town forester eh, Joe Peterson has basically been kind of in charge of letting us know. And we obviously ran into that. We were in the middle of logging it, and we had a massive windstorm come through, and we ended up having to log it more than we originally planned, because it took down a whole bunch of pines that year while we were doing it.
Especially by the parking lot.
But I don't have any opposition to, you know, to the trails being cleaned up and even some being added. I don't think that there's eh, certainly on my part, any concern with that. Eh, what I would want to also just do is follow up and make sure that eh, while you're volunteering, gonna be covered by insurance, cuz you'll, you'll be on our proper, the town property. So the town's insurance policy, we need to do some homework on that, I would say.
I'm hoping that doesn't come in concern.
Well, but we need to have our i's dotted and t's crossed, because.
Eh, as former chair of the Recreation Committee, when eh, Jeff Taylor was on the Recreation Committee, I know that we used to pay for some of the maintenance of those trails.
Oh, okay.
So just a little historical information, that kind of went by the wayside when Jeff passed away. Eh, we kinda always meant to get back to it, but we didn't have that person kinda championing it. And it's a lot easier to maintain year after year if you keep up with it.
For sure.
The Recreation Committee used to use some of its funds to help pay for that trail maintenance in the past.
And we can take that to our next meeting and talk to the board about it.
And I, and I spoke with Mr. Peck, and he's gonna try to look for a plot plan for the property, so I can kinda familiarize myself with the boundaries and all that. And I met with one of the landowners that's adjacent to it, the farm, just to try to understand where their property line is. But I think some of the posted signs that are on the property are on the Smith property, and they belong to the adjacent landowner, based on the trails and that kinda thing, and speaking to the adjacent property. I just, so I just wanna make sure that I wasn't in there, cuz I went in there for probably about ten hours in total, just moving trees so I could ride around the, it's like almost a mile circled in there. Eh, so I did go that far, but I figured before I spent too much time on it, to make sure that it wasn't outside the boundaries of what the Town of Clarendon wanted that property used for.
How many miles of trails do we have there?
There's at least one that's point eight miles, and it's a circle. And there's many other that connect those, that circle to itself, and then, I mean, with, with some creativity, you can make a trail all the way to the long trail to Spring Lake.
Oh, yeah, well, that, when we initially, who was that donated? Can't remember who donated that back piece. Eh, and Jeff was, you know, he was the leader on that. But that trail used to go right around the, of course, it was a nice pond back then, but now it's, you know, overgrown. But it's going around the back and into the back gate of the orchard eh, house.
Right, when I, yeah. When I was walking around there, I saw some really nice trails. I just didn't know if I was on the farm property or if I was on our Clark Smith property, and that's why I looked into that plot plan. And then my final question is, is in the process, what is the, the town policy to utilize hand tools, that kinda stuff in the process to clear that land up?
Eh, I was gonna say.
I'm not sure.
Like a chainsaw or weed whacker or pole saw or something?
You're not taking, you're not talking to a tractor or something?
Not talking, not motorized equipment, other than.
I was gonna say, I think our big thing was just no motor, we tried to limit motorized overlands.
That's what I was getting at.
Type stuff, yeah. But otherwise, I don't, I don't think we have anything in the rules or anything against hand style.
I think there used to be some bridges too, those like.
Yeah, there was.
Primitive bridges that I think were purposely not wide enough to allow like a tractor or ATV or something through, so.
Yeah.
And I think the Spencers built.
Well, my other thing I was thinking about is people with snow machines and all that sort of thing.
And we used to do that too, Jeff Claude and I, a couple of guys from CV, and we'd ride around there. Then along the base of the mountain, oh, past the Spencer's back fields, and then up over the top. Eh, that's how we used to go in them all the time.
Yeah, the only thing that I've seen in there is a sign of a horse.
Okay.
The horse is, I haven't seen any sign of motorized equipment or anything like that.
Well, that's good.
But long story short, it sounds like you've got the blessing. That's my, that's my take on it all, right?
Yeah.
It's the kinda thing where it's eh, could be used by all town folks that wanna.
Absolutely.
You know?
Why don't we make a motion that's official on the eh?
Well, eh, so you're not asking to be appointed though, is what you're asking?
It'll, I'll work through Sarah as part of the REC committee, so I'll update Sarah, and she can provide updates to the board, or I can come back and.
So I don't think there's a motion to be made.
Well, if they made a motion to eh, have the REC committee, that, you know, just so the select board, yeah, so the select board would be.
Well, that's already in their purview though, cuz if they wanna bring something to us and ask, they could. But I, I mean, I, like I say, I just don't think there's anything to do right now.
But they are asking us right now.
It's not our bylaws that we do that, like what you're saying, Robert.
Do, it's, it's already there that you care for the, that you care for it, so.
Yes, yeah, and then we come talk to you, yeah, just like we set it up today.
So, so are you asking for anything from us tonight?
No, 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 no.
Okay. She's not asking anything from us.
Not yet.
Don't hit me in the back of the head.
No.
Just one other, one other thing. I know that that parking area, as it, whatever you wanna call it, right there, used to be a bus turnaround.
Yeah.
I doubt it still is, cuz the bus routes have changed dramatically.
Yeah.
But you might wanna, if you're thinking that people are gonna be parking vehicles there, you might just wanna check with the school on that, to see if they are.
I do know when we were logging, we had to put a couple loads of gravel in there, because the log trucks and we had issues. So I do know it's, it's still a decent parking area, cuz I know we had to add some stuff.
If they're using it as a bus turnaround and people are parking there, it could become a little awkward.
Sure.
For the, for the boss.
If they're using it, yeah.
If they're using it.
Make the kids walk, but.
Well, I, I know the bus routes have changed so much since I was on that REC committee and talking about that, that it probably isn't a turnaround anymore.
Sure.
Well, Sarah, that'd be something that maybe just make a quick phone call.
I will, yeah, I can call.
Thank you for your interest.
Thank you.
And then just the hand tools, is that working through Cash or working through Sarah to use town tools? Or is that not something that the town does?
With that, yeah.
Yeah, that's something you.
We would have to talk to Cash when he's here next, if that's something.
Usually, we don't do that. Usually, it's, you know.
I, I can understand why.
Yeah.
I just wanted to ask.
Yeah, yeah.
And we can always look at the budget for the REC committee too, and see if that's something we can look into, cuz we buy tools for the REC committee. So working around that.
I would like to eh, express my gratitude, Mr. Rabtoy, for your volunteering. I mean, anything that's being done to improve our town, eh, I applaud.
Thank you, Mr. Ross, for sure.
What kind of hand tools are you thinking you, you need in there?
Eh, I'm assuming that a chainsaw, pole saw, that kinda stuff.
All right, Sarah.
Which one?
Where to you?
Is it the speed limit one?
Speed limit.
Okay, I, so I gave you guys a letter. I'm just requesting that seven B be put down to thirty-five miles an hour from forty-five. I know that is a state highway. As for the state laws, I need to come to you guys first. If it's something that you approve, then you can hand it to Kim, and she can send it over to the Vermont Trans people who, who do all the approving.
I'm not sure if that's, is that the way we should go, or should we suggest that they do? Like, what we do in town is the sheriff's department does a survey and eh, and eh, advises us as to what they, their opinion is.
Yeah, once it, I talked to the sheriffs just personally, but typically, they said, once it goes to the, the V Trans committee, who all approves it, they talk to the sheriff, and they do all that, but that's up to you guys. I mean, do it any way you want.
Yeah, no, I, I think at this point, it's if you're asking us to recommend eh, to go to the state, that's what you're saying the procedure is.
Yeah, it has to go through you guys first.
So.
I can make a motion that we refer this to V Trans.
Yep. Second.
All right, any further discussion? Are hearing on all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And at some point, we talked about this, of getting signs around that sharp turn coming s- south on seven B.
Yeah, for sure.
Eh, where, you know, eh, I don't know what kind of a sign, parking lot entrance caution or something like this, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm sure Cash probably knows best what he could put, you know, out there.
Yeah.
You're talking about the rec fields?
Yes, to get on, because when you're.
That's a, that's a state rec, that's a state request too.
Right.
That's not us.
But we can have that conversation, that's why I may ask.
Oh, certainly, they can be asked, yeah. No, I'm just saying, it's not, it's not, nothing to do with us. We can't put signs up on a state road.
I'd bet.
Yeah, we've been down that road before.
You can do it, it just might not last long.
They'll disappear about as fast as you put them up, I'll tell you that.
Yep. One more question. Sarah, are you talking about all of seven B or just like north or south of one oh three?
I don't, everyone says something different. I call it central, just cuz that's my address. But, but there where seven B runs down to the gorge road eh, onto seven A, and then on my road down to the trailer eh, place as well.
So both sections, north and south of one oh three?
Yes, is what I was asking about, yeah, all the way through there.
Well, won't you guys come up with a plan and talk to the state? I mean, we, we're giving you our permission or whatever.
Yeah, I can work with Kim.
It's being referred.
Yeah. All right. Eh. Do you have anything else that you wanna bring up tonight?
I just wanted to bring up, we're having a Veterans Day celebration, and I would love everyone to come. It's on eleven eleven at eleven AM, and I'm gonna leave some flyers here. And my one question for the town was, I wasn't sure if it's a town event. I was hoping to have like ten printed off here, cuz it's hard for my committee to keep going to Staples to have ten copies printed. Is that something that you would approve for a town event?
Sure.
Yeah.
I don't see why not.
And would you just send us two?
And I send my apologies, I, I'll be in school, so.
Damn.
So I won't be around, so, but yeah.
We'll miss you. Next one.
We'll pass these out just to look at them.
Leave work.
And then we'll give them back.
Yep.
Just to look at them.
Yeah, for Christians, do you live in a observing Veterans Day?
We have school on Veterans Day and Columbus Day in exchange for having the week of Thanksgiving off. We take the full week of Thanksgiving.
Yeah, John made a very good point. Can we put this on our website?
Yeah, that can be sent to Gloria, yep.
You guys wanna look at?
Ashley put it up.
Okay. I saw that.
I've been in broad with this a little bit.
So Kevin, we have found that it's better to teach on that day about it than to have kids enjoying the day off. So it's not like it's ignored.
Pass that one over to.
I, I, I figured as much.
Thanks, Bob. All right, so.
I think the last one's on the agenda, or I don't know where it's at, about the ordinance for no hunting in the park. Is that on the agenda?
Yes.
Oh, oh, it is?
Mm-hmm.
What's that again?
It is, it's just, it's right with everything else right here. It's the last, it's the last, last thing.
Oh, okay, yep, that's the last thing, sorry, I was.
So there, and I, so there, I don't wanna get too much into it, cuz most of the town knows at this point, but basically, there's been a gentleman hunting at our park. I did call the sheriff. I did tell him, he needs to talk to the select board, and recommended that, cuz there's no town ordinance. He had looked that up and targeted our town, cuz we're the only one without an ordinance. So he's been there hunting day and night, and it makes me really uncomfortable, like he's not. So he's been there hunting day and night, and it makes me really uncomfortable, like he's not the, well, I won't say anything else about the character. Anyway, there's somebody hunting in our parks day and night, and he's there after dark, I have talked to the sheriff. We are unable to trespass him. The sheriff recommended that other towns have given the rec chair the right to trespass somebody off of the, the property, 'cause at that point I had no rights to trespass him, and so he's still there due to us not having a town ordinance for no hunting in the park. And he said even if we posted the whole property, if I had any holes, he could still hunt. My issue is, as you know, the banks go down like this, and then all the trees that have to be visible, it's very hard to post. And so we're wondering how to move forward, and I thought the easiest way might be to make an ordinance, no hunting in the town rec fields. That is up to you guys, that's where I'm at with that.
So, let's see, we would have to, an ordinance, you have to post for thirty days.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, I believe.
Does the LCT have a boiler plate, like a sample ordinance or something?
Well, we can, tonight should be able to authorize her for this trespassing.
Well, I would start the process on an ordinance though.
Yes.
If you're gonna do an ordinance, which I understand, you know, rec fields, kids playing, I mean, you don't need an accident happening. Um, so, I would make a motion that Kim begin the process of seeing if the LCT has boiler plate or whatever that looks like, so that next meeting we can get the ball rolling on that. 'Cause the quicker we get it posted, obviously the quicker the thirty days clock starts ticking.
Yep.
Um-
As soon as we can get the gate in though, the officer said again, if I'm allowed to trespass, and we put no trespassing on that fence, if he goes through that front fence, off, and the second one, officer can come in and get him right out. Right now, we don't have the fence, so I'm working with Cash to try to get that in as soon as we can after that eleven eleven event or even before. And once we can put no trespassing and close it at night, he cannot go in and out.
But how do you know which way he's going in?
Well, he's parking like right up front every day, but I mean, yeah, we'd hopefully see his car, I mean, yeah.
One of the things I would like to find out from Wallingford, because of their rec field, you know, do, do they close those rec fields down at certain times of the year, or is there?
No.
I was gonna say, I think everything's just open, aren't they?
All open.
Hmm.
Well, but, I, so, um, the only thing that I would say, well, first off, we've got, I think technically we got a motion on the floor, so we probably should deal with that first.
Yes.
And then, before we get sidetracked.
You wanna repeat your motions?
So my motion is to have Kim begin the process of researching an ordinance for next meeting.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, good job.
Um, the only other thing, I was just gonna, springboarding off of that, um, trespassing is a pretty big deal, so, nothing against you, Sarah, but I think it should be, I think it should be a board member. Like, if it's, you're the sheriff liaison, I, I think trespassing should, no trespassing, it, I mean, it's a, it's a court proceeding, basically. It's a legal proceeding, so.
I understand that.
I, I would-
My question is, from your discussions with the sheriff, the person that has this authority has to be, uh, there or has to call in, or what?
You just call it in.
Yeah, you could call it in, I mean, I think actually, I talked to the new sheriff, I just forgot his name, but he was saying he was gonna trespass him anyway due to the fact that I already had, so my issue was, when I went there Saturday morning to do the fence lines, he was there with his ball pointing it at me. I couldn't even go onto the property, I tried to have conversations with him, I'm there alone on the property, so I could not go in to start working and set up for our fence guy who was coming, which was super frustrating, 'cause we were behind by a couple hours due to that. By the time sheriff showed up, it was four hours later. And so it was, you know, he's back there in the park, he's changing there, he's taking things down into the park, like tree stands and stuff. And so anyway, like getting a hold of somebody was hard to do, I was able to text Cash later, but in the moment it is hard, but, I mean, I agree, I don't, I live right down the street, people know my truck, so if I'm trespassing that, I'd rather not, but also-
'Cause your name will appear on the paperwork.
Yeah, and in moments like that, I would like it done as quickly as possible, because that was really frustrating to have families there, and it's like, I don't know what this guy's even doing, or-
Sure. Just speaking as somebody who's had to do it multiple times, um, in another, in another line of work that I do, no. Fairgrounds, um, I, I would recommend it should probably be from this table, is what I would, just because, it, you know, people can find out who's on the paperwork and they can, you know-
But, uh, Don, you're, you're closer to the rec center, I think, aren't you, than I am?
The rec center?
I mean, to the field, I'm sorry.
You're getting tagged.
I mean, it can be, truthfully, i- if, if we have a point of contact for no trespassing, it can be a decision of the board. Like, I mean, that, that's, that's reality too. Um, and no trespassing only does what it does, it, it has its limitations, is all I will say.
Yep, of course it does.
So, what are you asking for?
I was just wondering if Don had any interest in, uh-
Calling the sheriff?
Yes.
Sure. You wanna be the point of contact for it?
I can be, yeah.
Okay.
No, I was just thinking in terms of getting, if you needed to get to the, to that field in a hurry, I think-
Oh, during the daytime?
Well, I realize that too, but in every, whole weekends, nights, whatever.
So, in order to enact it, you shouldn't have to be present, you should be able to just call it in as long as you've got your information. It's, it's not, by my experience anyway, it's not a twenty-four seven on premises, you're gonna get called to do it.
Okay.
So, and in some cases, if a report goes out, like what Sarah made about her situation and her experience, the sheriff's will do it.
Yep.
They'll, you know, they'll just do it out, because.
Well, I mean, I'm just giving Don a chance if he wants to.
Well-
He's trying to make you feel important.
I'm just kinda, what, what, so, way on his, the way the, the law reads in the state of Vermont as far as hunting goes, any land that's not posted-
Correct.
Can be hunted.
Yeah.
Without, without, you know?
Yep.
So, until this goes into effect, or unless somebody legally wants to post that land, there's not much we can do about it.
Right.
Somebody's there hunting.
Yep.
There isn't, you know, it could be your, your, your backyard, if you had a hundred acres. And if it's not posted legally, they're allowed to hunt on that land.
That's why my thought is the first or, which is why my first motion was regarding the ordinance, 'cause without an ordinance, we really don't have much power. And it sounds like the reality is the sheriff may have potentially already taken care of this because of the interaction you had.
Yes, I hope so, yeah.
So, I mean-
So what do we wanna do?
Would, would we benefit? Let's ask our park expert right here.
Rotland City has a no hunting-
I was gonna say, you've got an ordinance.
Right.
Which is what we're, which is what we're starting the process on.
Would we benefit by posting the property as a step? The town would clearly post the property?
The first step is what you, so that's-
And, and, and the law was, you know, have-
An ordinance, everything, put, how big's, how big's the property?
Twenty-five acres. Yeah.
And you're gonna have to use stakes or something for the posting, I would guess.
That's, yeah, it, it'll be, it'll be a job.
I don't know if that's, you know, a, a law anymore, that it can't be nailed to a tree anymore. I think you can put it on the trees.
I think-
But it used to read, it had to be on a stake.
Yeah.
But I don't know if, I don't know now if it's the same.
Every four hundred feet.
Every four hundred feet.
And all the corners have to be marked.
And the whole seven A, from my understanding, seven-
It's the, it's the complete perimeter.
Yeah, it's a seven A, all along seven A has to be posted, everything has to be posted. And this gentleman is looking for holes, so it's not like, oh, I see, and I'm gonna be respectful and not go, or he'd be here talking to you guys right now. You know, that's not what he's there for.
Yep. Anywhere you can walk by a sign, they need a sign there. It's pretty vague, I, I do mine.
Yep.
And if you don't do your property, you can't kick anybody off in a-
Right. You can't just do the front, not the back.
Yep.
You know?
Well, there's nothing saying, I, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and authorize it to be posted.
I, I, I have a little trouble with that, I'll second it.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye. So, once it's posted then, we're still gonna proceed with this ordinance?
I would still proceed with the ordinance.
No hunting on town property?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Well, it's not gonna, I, it's not gonna be town property, it's gonna be the recreation field specifically, I think it's gonna be-
Just that one area.
Yeah, I think-
Does it mean that you have to actually change the date every year, or can you put a long-term sign?
No, every year has to be posted.
Every year you have to be-
For posting, yeah, it's every year, yeah.
And add no discharge of firearms?
And it has to be registered through the town?
Yep, correct, has to be registered with the town clerk and the whole nine yards, yep.
So on the short side of things, if we just posted the front, right, I know, we're having discussed. Uh, on the short side of this, though, if we just-
I mean, we've authorized it, the next question is who's gonna do it?
Yeah.
Good question.
Because, I mean, that's the next question.
But, I think if we just posted the front trees and stuff, or put one or two posts in where the trees were taken down, just temporarily for this year until we work through the other-
You're hoping it's gonna discourage?
Yes.
That's what your hope is?
Yeah. Alright, there's motion made, seconded, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Okay.
See where it goes.
Look, we haven't authorized anybody on this trespassing.
I think the consensus is we're gonna take that as it comes, based on, we don't really-
But, yeah.
We're not-
If it's, if it's posted, it would fall on the rec committee then, wouldn't it, or, or the sheriff, or?
Would fall to the sheriff, I would think, we, we would just have to call him and say, hey, it's posted, somebody's hunting.
Yep.
And, and we just do it that way, and that, that can go through you, George, as the sheriff's liaison.
Yep, that's right.
Yeah, I pass it all the time, so I think you're right, 'cause when I call him, he said I can do it over the phone trespass, so, I'll just text you or call you or wherever I need to.
And just pass the information in.
Yeah.
Yep, that's great, I like it, let's do it.
What's this other one here?
You, we already authorized that, you just have to sign it.
Oh, okay. Where the hell was it? It must've been this, this pile.
Yep, no, you're good on that.
Yeah, we already-
Is that it for you, Sarah? You all sat?
That's it, thank you so much.
Okay, all right. What's this, Nicolet?
Nicolet, yep.
Aslan, the last one?
Yes.
I'm going to try not to be too long. I have a lot of things in my arm, so I can give it to you to look at later. Um, I actually expected to have a screen so I could do a presentation, so I'm gonna summarize it. The presentation is actually on our website, and it explains all the details of, uh, what I'm gonna summarize here.
Okay.
So I'm here to give a report on a chapel, um, in North Fariden area. Last time I read a presentation was in two thousand eighteen, I believe, or seventeen eighty. And, um, I left here dreaming, and then things happened in my own life where I had to attend to my husband's, um, need, because he had a fall and, you know.
Yep.
All of a sudden, life changed, but also it opened my eyes to the tremendous need that we have in this country, which is to provide, uh, more assistance to people that wanna stay at home and not go to nursing homes. Uh, nursing homes are dreadful places to be. My name is Nicolet, but I'm also Dr. Aslan. I've been, um, you know, in nursing homes plenty of time, a geriatrician, and I know it's not a happy place. So as a town, I feel like it would be nice if we could offer a place where people could be dropped off for, let's say, a time between four and ten, for ten and four.
Yep.
Um, instead of having to hire private help or be sent to an assisted living or a nursing home. So I'm suggesting that we use this, um, this space to do that. Uh, but it would be really a fixed schedule, like the library is open. It would be sort of a, a room that's appointed with chairs and tables, and would have coffee and soup, and then it could grow into more. Uh, what, um, my husband and I did while he needed, uh, he should have been in a nursing home according to the hospital, we created this, uh, place called the Noises, where people could come during the day, and we had, uh, teachers and various staff members that would really create activities, so that they were always busy, and it was a great help for the, um, for the, for the spouse who, you know, probably was deteriorating faster than the person that was in great need of help. So, and I was in that position. So, um, I just feel that, you know, as a town, we've done everything for our young, um. Now it's also time to do things for people that are older. Uh, I don't think that one should go all the way to Redland to receive that kind of care. This is more like a social club that I'm talking about, social cul- cultural club where, you know, people would be, um, you know, having coffee, talking about their days, or, um, or just playing cards, you know, kind of like the old-fashioned cafe that we have in Europe, where people kind of gather during the day and talk about what they did hunting and-
That's the old, the, the old-
Not, yes.
Whitechapel.
Yeah.
Um, is there places, park?
No, um, the parking is very limited, and so people would have to either park, I mean, the people that come will not be driving.
Right, no, I understand.
So they would be dropped off, but there is parking in the back for people that would be working there, and then all the others would be short, you know, coming for a cup of coffee and leaving, so I don't expect a, a huge need for parking.
Now, is there, um, bathroom facilities?
Well, that's just what we are working on.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we're going to create a bathroom that's, uh, an incinerated bathroom.
Okay.
And, uh, the furnace is working, we couldn't believe it, so it's a question of finishing up the back room. We, we did also, you know, a whole assessment of the building in two thousand seventeen. And this is kind of all the reports, I'm gonna give you the colored copy, and I have more. We've had quite a few assessments, we've already fixed the roof, we, uh, some oil tip-
So you've been painting, painting it and upgrading the outside a little bit?
Yes, yes, we started painting the front, and, um, we also have, um, fixed the roof in the back. We're gonna put a new, new oil tank that hopefully will sit under the building. Uh, we don't have water, but there was a well that would have to be dug up again. Um, then it's a question of kind of cleaning it up and making it fresh, uh, maybe a new carpet. Um, the windows, um, have a lot of broken paint, but when I look closely, there's only one of the window that is seriously deteriorating, that we can't reopen right away. But right now, we're gonna fix all the glasses, so that we can reopen and so that we can get light inside. We're gonna do a good cleaning job of the current carpet, and if we can't save it and just put a rug around it, we'll have to pay for a new carpet or new flooring, whatever works best. We're also gonna have, uh, handicap, uh, entry in the back, so that people that are drop off, that really need a handicap, can be dropped off in the back and they can walk to the back of the church. What else? Um-
Now, there's no cellar in that?
No cellar, no, but there's space.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Uh, what else can I tell you? Uh, all of that is really in detail describing my, um, my presentation, but in there, the numbers are in here. Uh, I'm hoping that, you know, to involve the town, of course, we can get private funding, people can buy a window and have a name to it. Um, I'm suggesting to do a brick fundraiser, um, to make a brick pathway all the way around. Uh, I have an artist lined up that would do a program with the church, with the church, with the school, so that the kids could paint their bricks and, and feel like they're part of it. so that the kids could paint their bricks and, and feel like they're part of it. Um, we hope to involve the schools into doing things there, maybe after school, so that there's an interaction between older people and younger people. Um, there's, you know, an infinity of recreation ideas that maybe the recreation department can help us with also. Uh, what we did on the cave, um, the cave has thirty percent older people. So I thought there was a perfect place to do something like this because there are so many old people that really suffer because they just can't get out. And all the spouses kind of going downhill. So what we had done is we, um, we had, you know, engaged the community in providing things, like children that came to do a presentation. Uh, the staff would bring their own kids, but it was during the pandemic, actually. So the staff had their kids at home, so they would bring it, teach them singing the day before, and then they had to perform at the coffee hour. It was just a whole, you know, group of people working at trying to make this a family adventure. And the advantage of being in a place like this rather than, uh, an institution is that it feels like a home, you know? Uh, in this case, we had a property, uh, homestead that we purchased for that purpose, and.
Where was this?
On the cave.
Oh.
So we had a three-year trial of doing this. Now, I'm not suggesting to do something as, uh, involved in Clarendon. We only don't know if there's a, you know, I mean, I'm sure that people are aging since there is no younger one. And, uh, we need the tax money of the, of the older people. We wanted to take care of them because they are contributing to our town, right? So they need to be rewarded in some way and have a place where they can get together. The Grange, uh, building is nice, but it's something that has to be organized ahead of time. You couldn't really have an ongoing, you know, uh, schedule of people being there where they want to. So that's why the, the chapel would be a more ideal thing. The other thing is, you know, that, uh, from your town, uh, presentation of two thousand sixteen, I found that you actually had your eyes on North Clarendon as a potential for a town designation. And I think that that should go head in hand, that we just try to animate this chapel, but also, uh, apply for this designation, and we'll get some funding also to do more, to maybe give some grants to the people that are in this neighborhood to improve their homes so that it starts to look a little more appealing to the group. You know, I have, for example, across from the church, this young woman who moved in this brick house. And, you know, she's twenty-seven years old, and I could tell she's struggling to maintain this house. It really has a lot of value because it's a very old house. So I would like to be able to kind of help, you know, find money to fix the roof so that they don't change it to an old shingle roof because it's really, uh, slates, it's beautiful. But, you know, a twenty-seven-year-old with a professional job can't afford all these things, so she'll have a boyfriend, you know, change the roof and remove all of her. So I think that's important that we all get involved to make this neighborhood attractive and appealing for the children also who just go to school, not, you know, next door, and people going to the post office. So it's not just like an eyesore. Uh, there's so much in Clarendon that really could attract more than we can imagine. I mean, the good things. I see a lot of people riding their bicycle around. I mean, with the Historical Society, who's done such a great job of marking all the things, we could have a tour of Clarendon that would end up in a designated village. There's so many things that we could do to make Clarendon not, you know, a rich town, but keep that rural aspect of Clarendon that's what actually attracted me to this town. Because I was, uh, I grew up in a cl- in a rural town, and I just liked the untouched feel of that town, that there was no McDonald, there were no, you know, it, it just has, uh, it's beautiful. So when I see people bicycling everywhere, I'm thinking, yeah, we have something. They're, you know, they're coming here because we had all these flat roads. What about if we had a sign in front of the little schoolhouse that Bob has been, uh, trying to renovate in front of, you know, the cemetery and explaining who these people are? And, you know, kind of like, we, Clarendon is actually the oldest part of this region. Whitechapel is later. We are from the seventeen, the sixteen, and we have really a history that hasn't been touched. And I think the Historical Society has done a great, great job of digging all these things that we need to show. We need to share that. So my personal effort is just this one building, but it could bring a lot more if we, you know, had a group of people who could see forward, especially with, um, the Macken House, so it has left. The planning committee would be a good thing to do. I mean, it could be just small things. You know, I'm thinking like in Switzerland where I was born, you know, each town has its own little thing, you know? There may be, uh, uh, you know, a cow, a cow demonstration, say, here. You know, where all the cows go around town with their, with their bells. I mean, Clarendon could come up with something also unique, you know? Revive it from the past and try to, uh, keep its beautiful rural, um.
Is there a possibility of, well, of course, there's no, uh, I know that the state gets involved in any way, shape, or form. They're gonna want, uh, water in the place for fire retardant and all this kind of stuff.
That's a good question, so we would have to, um, to look into. I work with the Preservation Trust, and they have a whole now rural, uh, program where they give grants to, to do whatever it is to revive towns. So they work with the state, but they help people make it happen, so I can ask. Yeah, exactly. We have to look at the.
Because if you have, especially seniors, you know, a certain capacity in a building, then you have to make sure that.
So then we definitely need a well. We can't, there was a well. Thank you for reminding me of that part. Yeah, I think that's very important.
What are you gonna do with the water, wastewater?
Well, there is a well that's been filled next to the building. So I have Parker come and look at it to see.
Yeah, well, once you use the water in the building, how do you get rid of it?
Oh, well, we'll have to figure that out too.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this is just, we're just starting.
Just starting.
Renovation.
Well, the, the, the structure sound, uh, you know, the, the roof is sound, all of that, but there are some things that we still have to figure out.
Mm-hmm.
Like the water. We figure out the oil and the furnace is still not, it's, uh, actually working. Um, the bathroom, we found a solution. Now we have to find a solution for the fire. Um, there must be something that can be done in a place where you don't have town water uh, that is not based on well, maybe a supply of water underneath the building that we would pump for that purpose.
Okay, there's not much land.
No, there is not much land. We have to work with a neighbor who probably could see some benefit. You know, I've been working with his partner, um, Peter something.
Hmm.
Wesnick.
Hmm.
Um, and he didn't seem to have any problem, um, talking about it. I mean, I know they have a septic down there and maybe, I, I, I don't know if it really fills all the requirements. Maybe there's a possibility of, of doing a communal septic at one point. In other words, are we doing the septic and do it with him and we pay part of it?
Then you'd have to get the state involved.
Mm-hmm.
With the septic?
Oh, yeah.
Well, because it's probably designed septic and.
Yeah.
You'd have to get the state involved.
Right.
Sure.
They'd have to redesign the septic, and I don't think, off the top of my head, I don't think, you know, he's talking about a municipality sewage system, where you have more than one, uh, entity, uh, septic system, that's a municipal.
Right.
So I, you know, I guess before you want to determine how you're gonna get water into a sink.
Yeah.
It's how you're gonna get rid of it.
Yes, of course, yeah.
You gotta make sure you, you got a way to get rid of it.
Yeah.
So you probably should get in touch with Kevin Doherty, Arizona,
Mm-hmm.
and then he probably can give you the information to who you're gonna get in touch with.
Yeah.
Anything that septic's gonna have, the state's gonna have to have its hand in.
Sure.
Right.
We're gonna need a submitter in there, I'm sure.
Yeah. So, uh, just.
Sorry.
To, to kind of bring some closure to tonight, um, obviously, uh, appreciate hearing your vision and hearing what you're, um, looking for. Are you, are you, um, making it, are, are you set up as a five oh one C three at this point?
Oh, yeah, no. My, my relationship with the five oh one C three is this is only one project.
Correct, but is, is Chapel eighteen seventy-one its own?
No, no, not yet. I mean, you know, this comes to, to be for a long time. There is something called a municipal, uh, municipal trust that also we should look at because it actually, uh, allows you to regroup various projects in town. And I was reading about it today. Uh, that's also one of the programs from the, from the, um, historical preservation, uh, where they help people figure out all the angles of doing that.
Have you, have you folks got involved with any of this, you know, historical?
Oh, yes. I've been, so from the beginning, you know, my husband and I had gone to all the workshops, and so that's where I knew of where the money is. There is money, we just have to apply, and we also have to spend some money hiring somebody who knows how to get the grants. I have a person in mind, but she hasn't responded yet. Uh, but that's where the town needs to decide as a town whether they want to invest in this direction or they want this to be completely a private, you know, non-profit organization doing this. Which is a little bit slower than when the town has, you know, given a little bit of the support. Um, given that, you know, it would serve the population of Clarend- Clarendon, it would make sense that eventually the town has some kind of ownership, and, you know, we would turn it over. I mean, I don't have any desire to keep a, a historical building in, in a town that, you know, we're basically trying to facilitate, you know, reusing, the nonprofit tries to facilitate the use of old historical buildings that have gone abandoned, try to find a vision for it, and then turn it over to the, to the town or the organization that wants to run it.
So at this point, the property has been turned over to your foundation, then?
Right, yes. In two thousand fifteen or sixteen by the White family and the Friends of the Chapel. So it's been officially our project since then. So we've raised the money to get the roof done and all of that.
Is there a deed on this property at this point?
That would be a Lister question? No.
No.
Well, what you mean by that? I mean, all property has deeds. I mean, there was a deed nineteen forty-one or nineteen forty-something.
Okay.
Um, I forget the pro- it was a long name of North Clarendon Community, whatever, something.
Mm-mm.
That's the last record.
Because you said you, you couldn't find an ownership to the building, right?
No, that, there was an, the owner back, you know, sort of a church slash, you know, community. They were.
The association.
Sort of a community center back then, and it was, you know, I think it was originally built as a Baptist.
Right, yeah.
Church. And the Baptist church then sold it for, you know, twelve hundred dollars or, you know, some amount, which would, would have been a lot of money at the time.
Right.
Uh, uh, to, you know, North Clarendon, you know, Community Center, something, you know, a long name, but something like that. And that's the last.
Steve Sorrell.
Detransfer that I'm aware of.
But, but you've seen. Steve Sorrell says that in the twenties, actually, it had been used as a social club.
Yeah, it was both sort of a church and a gathering place.
No, no, but at that time, there was no more church. It was supposed to be just social club for, he said. He seems to know the history of that.
Yeah, but when it got transferred in, you know, four, forty-one-ish, something like that, you know, that it being a community center was part of what that was about.
Right.
You know, because the Baptist, it wasn't being used really as a Baptist church anymore.
Right, right.
But that's the last deed filing that I'm aware of.
And so for some people who say they, they're the owner, and what kind of?
Documentation, what kind of documentation exists?
Yeah, that's what I'm curious about.
That's certainly interesting.
That would be a, a title search or whatever.
That'd be a title search. Yeah, that'd be a title search.
Right, but in terms of what's filed, that's probably the last.
Filing?
Filing that you might find, because I don't think there was a filing with, you know, the Friends of the Chapel and, you know.
No, I mean, I think that it was really a letter of donation, but there was no deed at the time.
Yeah, March gave, you know, a letter.
Yeah.
You know, uh, representing the Friends of the, name, you know, to, uh, yeah, I think Clarendon Heritage.
Right.
Went to, uh, but there's not a deed filing with that.
Okay. Is there a possibility that we could keep these?
Of course, it's for you.
Oh, okay.
Yes, yes, yes. I mean, a special print with a color so that they would be more attractive.
Wow, that's good. Thank you very much. Um, yeah, because, I mean, a- at this point, that certainly is, is a, is a, is an issue. But the other thing too, you know, when it comes to nonprofits in town, they would apply to be, like, if they're seeking funding from town, they would apply as an article.
Yep.
In March on the, on the ballot.
Exactly.
And have to get the, and have to get the petition risen.
Yep.
To be able to be an article.
Yep.
So that's, I mean, that would be, from my standpoint, um, but I, I would say our, our requirement is they have to be a five oh one C three. So it would have to be established as a five oh one C three to be eligible to do.
Yeah.
To be eligible to do that. Because nonprofits have the ability to, to make a request if they get their, if they get a petition.
Yep.
And to be on the ballot.
Right.
So that, I mean, because otherwise, George and Mike, you've been around the longest on this board. I don't know as if the, the town, aside from emergency services, which is the regional ambulance, I don't think the town has ever just given money to a nonprofit.
Not that I can.
Not to my knowledge.
Becky Malir will be the first.
Correct, that's why I'd say it'd have to be a vote.
The question is, would you want it to be run by a nonprofit? Would you, would you want it to be part of your, you know, your town plan? In other word, I don't mind facilitating all the repairs and all of that so that you can get to the point where you could say, well, we feel comfortable taking this on now. We want this to be part of the town deeds because we're gonna put money into it. I have no financial, the foundation has no financial interest more than facilitating the rehabilitation of a beautiful building that, you know, we, we're just envious. We just want to see this old building, uh, just stay alive because I know that there are, you know, they have real money value to a town. You know, when you can renovate something like this to attract people.
Marjorie White, Marjorie White Southern.
Right.
All right. She has a lot of hester, history, n- knowledge of that building.
Yes, her grandfather, her great-grandfather was the one who built it. That's why she felt she owned it, but not she owned it.
Yeah.
That they owned this building. That was kind of how, and because there was no more, uh, fam- uh, church, you know, practicing there, it had been lost. She felt that she kind of wanted to make sure that this church was, uh, put in the faith. So she came to me, I think because Bob mentioned it, that the Historical Society didn't want to take care of that. But I said, no, that's something I love to do, so we just put it as one of our projects.
Well, I guess I would ask our historical people, is there, what interest do you have in terms of this?
You don't.
Oh, I'm interested in any historical building, house being preserved and saved. But it's, you know, it's not a project, you know, that we're.
You guys got your hands, hands full already.
And they can one thought and it's another.
And we're making great progress on the schoolhouse. But we've certainly got another couple of years worth of work, you know, on that, bringing that back to life. You know, uh, and so, you know, that's our, you know, focus.
Sure.
Building, I mean, I would love to see this building saved, preserved, brought back to life. You know, uh, any, you know.
Sure.
It kills me every time I see an old house get torn down.
Yeah, I know, I know. Well, I mean, I think, um, like I say, it sounds to me like there's a couple of things at play. The title and deed situation. there's a couple of things at play. The title and deed situation, but also, um, the initial to me would be that article, if, if the taxpayers are gonna support it.
Yep.
That would be through the article, cause ultimately that's the way the taxpayers get asked, is this something you want to see? That you want your tax dollars going in this direction?
Yep, absolutely.
So before March?
That's, yeah, so that would be March.
Way before March to get on to the...
It's Jan-, it's technically January, yeah.
I mean, if you want to, you know, to do it as a nonprofit, that's fine. I mean, the nonprofit that is actually taking care of this building right now is a 501(c)(3) and has all the credentials to do that. What we prefer to do, because you sometime, you know, something seems interesting, but in the town or whoever is interested can go forward, why form a nonprofit, another one, and then it doesn't go anywhere and it's cost a lot of time. So we lend our name while the research is begun and everything's, until it's firmly, okay, this is gonna be part of a town project, then either we turn over the building to the town or it creates its own nonprofit to handle this project.
So that comes back to the deed discussion.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, so if you accept, cause I know you're advertising in here that you want donations, you're running it through the parent nonprofit at this point? The, the donation goes to that, that's who issues the tax deductible receipt?
Just for that project. And, uh, that's what we do with three or four projects that I'm in charge of. And then, um, it, it allows us to get to a point where people kind of finally see the picture. Oh, that is a nice building. Oh, it's painted.
Sure, sure. But I would suggest, not to cut you off.
Go ahead.
I would suggest that you, uh, start considering getting something on the ballot or, uh, for March. And the point was made that we'd like to have that information before the end of January, right?
Of course, yeah.
For timing wise, for the ballot, you need to talk to the South Florida?
Yeah, she's the one who would handle the timing.
Okay.
Anyways, I would, uh, suggest or propose that I leave my copy with Kim. She's here every day. So if anybody in town would like to see this and some depth.
I was gonna put this copy here.
Yeah, so you can refer them to our...
It's also all on the website. In other words, you can download it, print it on your printer. And the presentation that really gives all the pictures of what we've done and what we're gonna do is also a hopefully a good selling point.
Yep.
Cause I tell the story of how I came up with what I see as a vision and it's pretty real. And I even wrote a book about it because I felt like people need to know that they don't wanna go to nursing homes, it's living the experience we've had. Hor- horrendous. And my husband got to the point where he didn't want to live because it was so horrible. And it was one of the best five stars is living in, on the Cape, you know? So that's why just, you know, with my professional background and my experience with him, decided I need to do something about this.
Yeah, those old people, you gotta look after them, I guess.
Well, we need to enhance the fact that they have value and that they can bring things. Now, the tendency is for young people, and you'll, if you read my book, you'll see how my, uh, my stepchildren reacted. It's just like, put them in memory care. I don't wanna deal with this, you know? And really, they've been losing the value of a human being with so many good stories. Entertained everybody and, you know, he just shouldn't have been in, in a nursing home. And so I just kind of like feel like I'm not a good for this. And I'm not going to do this just for you. You know, I'm going to be giving talks all over the country about this. So this is just my contribution to the town. I am going to become now a full-time resident of Clarendon. I've decided to give more time to promote because I think that I can contribute in some ways.
Well, thank you for coming and chatting.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And...
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
And do not hesitate to come back when you need us.
Yep.
Well, I'm going to do some more research on the fire, um...
Yep.
The water disposal and all these things.
Yep.
And I think that's a key point. I mean, initially, everybody said, you can't do anything, there's no bathroom. So I started, I looked on my computer and said, well, there's got to be a solution.
Yep, there's solutions. It's just a time, matter of time and money.
Thank you.
The second one being more important.
Old business, George.
Oh, that's me.
Yeah.
Notice, I noticed the inflection on old. I wondered if you're trying to suggest anything.
Football, George, football, George.
Football, yes, right quick. Uh, I have two items that I wanted to just report on the transfer station. Item number one is that, uh, my last discussion with Horst, uh, indicated that he has been telling people that we're not taking money and he has not gotten a, a great deal of...
Cash, he's not...
Cash, excuse me. And he hasn't been getting the, uh, pushback in terms of that and it's been working out so far. And so Heidi and I were talking earlier today that we'll let, we'll just let things ride and see, uh, if we get any flack or concern from people.
So we're headed in the right direction?
I think so.
Okay.
That's number one. Number two, back in our budget time, I suggested that we put in an income of twenty thousand from the transfer station for the year that we're in at this point. And where are we at at this point, Heidi?
Uh, so it's actually twenty-two thousand and we're a little over ninety-seven hundred. So we're at forty-four percent of our budget. Um...
So it's making progress.
Looks like we're gonna potentially get there.
Good.
Okay.
So that's it.
Okay.
Oh, I guess one other thing, uh, in the minutes, just make a note that, uh, Horst is doing a great job at the transfer station.
Yep.
Good.
They're working hard to rectify. Um, let's see. Heidi, do you have anything else you wanted to discuss?
Uh, we wrapped up tax collection October fifteenth. Uh, the amount that went delinquent this year was two hundred thirty-eight thousand nine hundred sixteen dollars and ninety-eight cents. Um, typically, from year to year, we've seen anything from a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty thousand, uh, in that ballpark. So we're well within that ballpark. Um, so Ashley is sending out all of her notices and, um, tax payments are rolling in as to be expected. Um, the thing that I was going to request of you folks tonight is to set our budget meeting schedule. And I was hoping that we could, as in years past, um, do the hour before a regularly scheduled meeting, uh, which would put us, I believe, at November tenth for our first budget workshop, um, starting at five P.M. from five to six. And then the regularly scheduled select board meeting at six o'clock.
The tenth, you say?
So starting on the tenth?
Seems reasonable.
I'll make that a motion that we...
No, no, I think your select board meeting on the website says your meeting's on November twelfth.
It is the tenth. Nope, it's the twelfth, Wednesday the twelfth. Yep.
Okay, well then, Wednesday the twelfth.
Sounds good.
Oh, yes, cause that's, that's Veterans Day, right?
So I think...
The tenth?
No, the eleventh.
No, the eleventh is Veterans Day.
But it's a holiday, right? The tenth is a holiday.
Holiday observed, maybe?
Yep.
But the...
Could be.
Tenth is another, uh, really important date too, right? Tenth?
Is that the Marine Corps' birthday?
Marine Corps birthday.
I was gonna say it's Marine Corps birthday. All right, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and approve that budget meeting for the twelfth at five o'clock.
Second.
Any further discussion? That'll be the startup.
Startup, yep.
All right.
Now, if I remember right, Mr. Chairman, uh, on, on the beginning of the budget stuff, that the newest board member brings cookies or something?
I think you've got...
If you're gonna go for it, go for the gold and say pizza or something. Come on!
Don, I don't know what it is, but he's had you in this side.
I was gonna say, you were the process.
No trust, that is.
All right, this motion made, seconded, we've had some kind of discussion. All those in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And, um, in my case, send me a reminder that we're coming.
I will.
You have a case?
Yep.
Case.
Budweiser or?
Um, do you have anything you wanna report?
No.
Kevin? Bob? Donnie, do you have any concerns?
No concerns, Mr. Chairman. Actually, I do have one. There was a note in here from, um, Marjorie Southern.
I don't know if that was something that kind of went along, was she, was I was a little puzzled about it. Was she approving, disapproving the future use of the building or?
Oh, I think she was approving. Yeah, she was very...
I think it's disapproval, isn't it? Kim, talk to her. When, which way?
I did not, actually Gloria handed out those to be included.
It's, it's like, this is a house of God.
Yeah.
And this shouldn't be used for anything else but worship.
For the agenda item pertaining to North Clarendon Chapel, Marjorie White Southern can't make it to tonight's meeting, but she wanted to share her thoughts about the North Clarendon Chapel and Village. It is a house of God. It should be used for worship, Christmas services, for funerals, weddings, and hymn sings.
Which doesn't seem to agree with what we were hearing from this other lady.
No.
Well, it's, but I don't think you can speculate. It's on the record. She asked for it to be on the record. So it's on, it's on the record. So that's all you can, yep.
All right.
I think you were to me, Mr. Chairman. Um, uh, the only thing I would say is just a thank you if you're, if anybody in the office sees, uh, Deputy Sweet, uh, thank you that the traffic on Creek Road was moving much slower this morning, which was, which was a good thing this morning, so.
You found out personally?
No, um, I have been in the last week worried that I was gonna have to go on the road, off the road to avoid traffic coming around the corners too fast. And traffic was noticeably moving slower this morning, so.
Well, the interesting thing for, my wife talks about is that quite often people are stray, straying over the center line.
Well, when you're doing...
On some of those little curves there.
When you're doing fifty or sixty miles an hour, sometimes it's hard to stay on one side of the line, so. Anyway, my thanks to him, if anybody sees him.
I was, uh, coming...
Yeah.
Yeah. He was definitely patrolling this afternoon too on Walker Mountain Road.
You found out?
Oh, yeah. All kinds of blinking lights.
Did you?
Oh, yeah.
He should come patrol on the corner line with his car before driving fifty miles an hour.
Easily.
Yeah. I was in a hurry to get over to the meeting that we had at, uh, Art Peterson and I about the flagpole stuff over to Ballfield.
There you go.
And I shouldn't have been, what did I think?
Shouldn't have been in quite so much of a hurry?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then he smiled. Um, I don't have...
You now.
Yeah, I, I don't have anything else. Do you have anything, George?
Uh, just a couple of hours, it'll probably be all set. I'll pass for tonight.
Okay.
Make a motion, we adjourn?
I'll second it.
All those in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?